Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the November 27th, 2012 Planning Board Meeting, which I am now calling to order. The first item on the agenda this evening are the minutes of November 20th. Mr. Secretary?
I would like to move the minutes as amended.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? abstained. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is an approval not required. Plan, Town of Falmouth, to create and convey a 13,893 square foot parcel from Lot 68 Bernard's East St. Jane Drive to Lot 0, Blacksmith Shop Road, East Falmouth. Mr. Curry.
Board members, just take a look at the plan here. You'll see this is a lot, the existing lot on the outside, right here. The outside perimeter of the lot, it looks like this.
Identified Lot 81.
Great. And this plan will create this non-buildable parcel here, it's shaped like that. This plan would create this parcel, not a building lot. It's not a building lot because it's the area of encroachment, but doesn't, the plan doesn't depict a subdivision, so it's entirely endorsed with approval not required because it's, the nomenclature on the plans is not a buildable lot. Very simple, Mr. Secretary. That then will be conveyed back to town and off we'll go to our next exciting venture.
Right. Would you, would you just give us your brief, the brief history of that, so that the audience and the-
There's a little encroachment issue there with regards to landowners' personal property. We have to come to a settlement of some sort. We did at a previous town meeting, and now this plan is a land court plan. It takes a long time to put these together, get this all detailed. But for the purposes of board's vote, the plan doesn't depict a subdivision. It swaps indeed in accordance with this.
Okay. So, yes, Paul?
Clarification, please. The minutes say you have to take land from parcel 68 to Lot 0. Is that located on this, right? Because I see Lot 81, I see Lot 82, I don't see 68 and 0.
I would ask the board if District Guard was ever on the agenda, because it could be a typographical error. The plan itself doesn't depict a subdivision, so it tells the boards.
Okay, the area is correct. So, okay. All right, then I want to entertain a motion that the board accepts this as an approval not required.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained.
Aye, abstained.
Motion carries. Nice to see you, Richard. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing. Falmouth Rod and Gun Club definitive plan to subdivide 24.4 acres into two lots located at 203 Carriage Shop Road, East Falmouth. Before we get started-
Mr. Chair.
Yes?
I have had been for about 20 years a member of the Falmouth Rod and Gun Club. I resigned my membership last June. What is the advice of the plan?
I would-
Conflict of interest here?
I don't know, whether or not you might have a conflict of interest.
Then I will recuse myself out of an excess of caution.
All right.
I can sit here, though, can I not?
Yeah, as long as you don't make any facial, you're not supposed to-
I'll go sit.
I'll go sit. I'll leave the lot. I should've-
You showed up too early, Richard.
I should've stayed home and had dessert.
Before we get started, for those of you who have an agenda, here, the, the way we conduct public hearings is on the back, there. And just as a review for everyone, the clerk will read the published legal notice, and then the applicant will explain the proposal, and then the planning board members can ask the presenter for clarifications through the chair. At the end of the presentation, the chair asks for staff reports from the, from our staff, and then the public comments will be accepted, and the chair will close the public hearing, and then the board will take it under advisement. So that's the way we'll proceed tonight. So, the first item is for the clerk secretary to read the published legal notice.
Which one is it, Ralph?
Both, I believe. I don't know, I haven't seen that.
You got down there, that's the one I could use?
Excuse me. There's three. Are they, are they three different dates? Yeah, November, no, no, they're all November 6th.
Different newspapers?
Different, yeah, different, different weeks, so.
Okay.
The information is there for you, gentlemen?
Yep.
Town of Falmouth Planning Board Public Hearing Notice. Applicant, Falmouth Rod and Gun Club, Inc., location 203 Carriage Shop Road, East Falmouth. Proposal, definitive plan to subdivide 24.4 acres into two lots. Date and time, Tuesday, November 27th, 2012, at 7:00 PM, Falmouth Town Hall, 59 Town Hall Square, Falmouth, Mass., 02540. Plans may be reviewed at the planning office from 8:00 to 12:00, and from 1:00 to 4:30, Monday through Friday, 508-495-7440, by order of the planning board. Jim Fox, Secretary and Clerk, November 6th, 13th, and 20th, 2012. Three different ads.
Okay, thank you. All right. Now, then the applicant presents their, yep? Oh. So, for the applicant.
Yes, thank you. I'm Tom Bunker with BSS Design, for the applicant, the Falmouth Rod and Gun Club. I'd like to first point out that under this proposal, there'll be no physical changes proposed in any way, either, you know, to the roadway, or to the structures, or to the use of the property. Right now, it actually is two parcels already. There's one parcel right here, and another parcel that are assessed separately by the town. This parcel includes a 20-foot strip of, strip of land going out to Carriage Shop Road. Rod and Gun Club has been in existence since the '30s, and the Skeet Club has been almost that long. Basically, Rod and Gun Club owns it all, been leasing to the Skeet Club for a nominal fee. This lot, and now they want to convey it to the Skeet Club, so they can have their own separate parcel. This parcel here has no frontage on a street, so the purpose of this plan is to create a street, so that this parcel, which is to be conveyed, has the requisite frontage on a road, so that it will be a conforming building lot. There are structures on it already, we don't want to create a non-conformity here. So, that is the proposal. This strip of land here, it's only 20 feet wide, to be called Sportsman's Lane, then it'll create 100 feet of frontage for Lot 2. Lot 1 will be all of the remaining land around it. As I said, there's, there's no proposals to, at the moment, or that I know of, to make any changes physical, physically. We've asked for many waivers, so that physically it can stay the same as it is. I have a plan that shows the existing conditions, a gravel surface, actually been hardened with recycled asphalt material, which is used commonly as road subbase. Been hardened with that to keep down the dust that were recently, or several years ago. Utility water mains put in here. There was a comment, Fire Department, to add a hydrant. Actually, when we were doing this work, we had a hydrant proposed on there. Bill Chapman, our water supervisor at the time, said not to put a hydrant in there, so we took the hydrant out, and this six-inch line that's here is, so it is dedicated for the fire suppression for the Rod and Gun Club. So, in spite of the comment from the Fire Department, we, we asked that you not require a fire hydrant. It'd be great expense to put a new eight-inch main through there, and again, there's, there's no new building proposed, no conditions are changing, so I feel it wouldn't have the need for a hydrant out, out there in addition to what we have already. Propose to not pave it. Basically, I said, make no other changes, except we're creating a roadway of less, less than required width, but with a cul-de-sac at the end, it's longer than the 500 feet, so we're requesting a waiver of the maximum dead-end length. That's, that's the proposal. I'll take questions, will you?
Okay, questions for clarification from Mr. Bunker? Jim?
Do we have a referral from the Fire Department? He mentioned something about fire protection, and what do we have, something from the Fire Department?
Your, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
We do have a comment in writing from the Fire Department Guards to this plan with requests of a hydrant.
Is, is there currently fire protection systems sprinklers in the building now?
If I could put this in the record, this is a letter dated February of 2007, from the Falmouth Water Department, basically saying to remove the hydrant from the plan, which we were preparing at that time.
Okay, Jim, you want to read this, then? This is what you asked for. This is dated 2007, that's dated 2012. Would you read that to all of us, please? That.
Okay. Planning Board, from Timothy Smith, Deputy Fire Chief, Comment, Falmouth Rod and Gun Club, Application. Both Fire Department Officers Mel Trot and I have reviewed the proposed plan by the Falmouth Rod and Gun Club, Inc., located at 203 Carriage Shop Road, on 11512. Definitive plan, special permit. The plans indicate the creation of a new road to be named Sportsman's Lane. At this time, it is our recommendation that a hydrant be placed on this newly created road to protect current occupancies and any further proposed buildings. Respectfully, Timmy Smith, Timothy Smith, Assistant Deputy Fire Chief.
So that is some, have you seen this letter, Mr. Bunker?
Actually, I haven't seen that, but I saw it in the staff report, that they requesting a hydrant.
Okay.
I could say that the, and you might not have been aware of it, but the Rod and Gun Club has a, has a six-inch main going to it, it is fully sprinkled.
That's what I was, that was my question, it has fire protection system.
It does have fire protection system in that building. The, the other one is a smaller building. There are no residences here, there aren't, aren't proposed to be any residences here. So, wouldn't have to worry about that aspect of it. But in the, the letter from, from Bill Chapman, you see, he said to, we, at, at some point, and I can't remember the exact reason why, and it might have been for insurance reasons or some other, they had to put in a fire protection system, and we had a main, an eight-inch main going out, which is typically the requirement for a hydrant, and from that, we had a hydrant at the end of it, and then fire protection going from that main to the building, and in that letter, Mrs. Chapman said, "Take out the hydrant, make a dedicated main of six-inch diameter," which the Fire, Water Department does not like putting hydrants on six-inch diameter mains, but that main is a dedicated main only for fire protection for that building. And there's also a two-inch water service for, for the potable water.
Right.
And so, you know, caught between two, two town departments, but at the time, we were, you know, we're doing it for that, and, and it would be a great expense to put in another eight-inch main to put in a hydrant.
Comments on that particular issue? Yes, Doug? How far away is the next hydrant on the road? Does anyone know that?
Yeah, it's down in the corner. About 75 feet to the south.
Yeah, we have a hydrant there.
On the next one.
It's on Carriage Shop.
On Carriage Shop Road.
To the east.
So, I guess, they're interested in having a hydrant available for possibility of other buildings. There is a building, number 205, here, that's over by the Skeet place?
Yes, it's part of the Skeet Club.
Right. Is that, that's a building, and that doesn't have any fire protection, right?
That does not.
Okay, and that's part of the subdivision, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, I'm trying to understand why they, why they might be interested in having a hydrant down there. You have, you have a dedicated service to the, to the, to Rod and Gun Club building, but there's no fire protection for building 205, or these other sheds? No, I'm not, I'm, this is speculation on my part. Other comments about the hydrant? It's not possible to have a hydrant with a six-inch main?
In the letter from Chapman, he said it's to be dedicated solely for the use of the fire suppression system in that building.
Right. So, my, I know, but my question is, is there such a thing as a fire hydrant with a, with a six-inch main?
Yes.
There is such a thing. So you could tap in-
It can be, it can be done.
It can be done. And, and you could tap into that existing dedicated line somewhere where they might recommend the fire hydrant. Does it say, it didn't say where the fire hydrant should be placed, did it?
Even though he, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Well, he restricted it to be dedicated for that use, so.
Right.
Right, so you'd have to ask, it seems to me like you'd have to ask the Fire Department to, whether or not you could, you could put in a fire hydrant on a six-inch main, somewhere where they would recommend it be placed. I would think tapping into that wouldn't be that, all that expensive. Yes, sir?
Yeah, if the board wants to further look at this, I'll contact the Order Department and the Fire Department, but remember, at this point, you're just gathering information.
All right, right, okay. Well, I was, I was trying to get information. I was trying to find out whether you can have a fire hydrant at, on a six-inch main. Jim?
Just a further question. What is the use of the structures that are on the proposed lot being sold to the Skeet? There's the buildings on them, are they the same thing as public assembly? I mean, this, that's why this is sprinkled. What are those buildings used for?
Uh, you know, they have a, they have a club there.
I only see this building here on this other, on this other.
Gary Anderson, I'm Treasurer of Falmouth Rod and Gun Club. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to chat with you. The buildings on the Skeet Club land, there is one building which is quite small, there is a sitting area with some tables. It is generally used for people waiting to go out onto the Skeet range. There are, I believe, three other buildings. One is a storage unit where they store the clay pigeons, and then there are two towers from which they throw the, the clay pigeons, and that's the extent of the buildings.
So building 205 is, is used for what now?
It is a small building, there, there's a sitting area with some tables where generally the people wait until they are called to go out onto the Skeet range, or the, the trap range.
It's enclosed?
Yes.
Has bathroom facilities and?
Yes.
Okay. Other questions on this, on this particular issue? We're not discussing the merits of it right now, we just want clarification. Okay? Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Any other questions on anything else on the, on the plan? I mean, on the presentation? Yes, Doug?
It's not about the presentation, but can I ask, what is the use of these other two lots? Are those residences, the other two Rod and Gun parcels?
One is the archery range. 11A is the archery range. This, this 14 is vacant.
No built, no, no structures on those lots, right. So, I'd like to just review again the waivers that you're asking for, the fire hydrant issue, not paving the road, the width of the road, and the length of the road. Those are the four, four things that you're asking waivers for?
There are more, more details than that listed in the requested waivers.
Okay, do we-
It's part of the application.
Clarification, they're, they're requesting a waiver on all your constructions.
All of them?
They only want to use what's the existing conditions.
Okay.
Sidewalks.
Sidewalks.
Street trees.
Everything.
Other utilities, walkways, bikeways, street signs, street lights.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, could I make a comment?
Sure.
In addition, Laura Moynihan, for the record, I'm an attorney, and I represent the Rod and Gun Club. I just thought it might be important, there are a lot of waivers that have been requested, but I thought it might be important to point out that there, there are two parcels out there already, so really what we're doing here is adjusting lot lines only, but because one of the lots doesn't have frontage, we're required to show Sportsman Lane to create the frontage. So really, all, that's all we're really doing here, is creating frontage for this lot. We have to do that legally through the definitive plan process. If we came to you with an A&R plan to simply adjust the lot line, which is what we originally wanted to do, adjust the lot line between the two parcels, and boom, we have a new parcel to convey to the Skeet Club, we couldn't do that because we'd be creating a zoning violation because of the absence of frontage. So, it seems more involved than it really is, and I just thought that's important to, to point out. This definitive plan process is, is necessary because of the legalities of the plan approval process. But as far as the conditions go, nothing's changing. Both parcels are under a recreational land use exemption through the town, so any change of use of those parcels requires notice to the selectmen and a right of first refusal in favor of the town. So the land, as it's currently used, is, is well protected that way, as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any further questions from, for Mr. Bunker? Okay, then, then, does the staff have any additional comments or reports?
Do we have one more question? No, I'm just saying, public, we need to done with-
Yeah, I will answer that. First I ask for, first for, for the staff.
No, all the information is there, and we'll try to sum the details for you. Just remember that what they're asking for is essentially what Laura indicated, is adjustment of lot lines, what they have to do with the, to pay.
Okay. Yes, Paul?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Paul. Just one other clarification, where the board has the ability to accept this plan, existing conditions plan, and then-
Condition it.
You know, perfectly condition it that any, any future development comes under your control.
Right, right. No, Paul?
It's my understanding that you'll be checking with the Fire Department to see whether the hydrant versus the dedicated line is acceptable to them? Is that-
Correct. I'll, I'll go back and check in with the engineers and see if we can straighten this the way out, what department says this, and what department says that, so.
Okay, then, any more questions from the board members for either Mr. Curry? Yes?
I just think the letters would directly-
For, either questions for Mr. Curry or Mr. Bunker?
Yes.
I have one more question. Is, is it correct that really we should only concern ourselves with this new lot, and not anything else, because are we actually creating a road, or we're just adjusting the lot line?
You're, you're actually creating a road, so the purview goes all the way out to Carriage Shop Road, because you're laying out essentially a 20-foot way under the subdivision control wall, so you have, your purview is the entire one, and the abutting, and the abutting lots. You can condition the, you can condition the, make findings with regards to your decision that implicates all the land shop.
Anything else? All right, yes, Ms. Moynihan?
Yes, I just want to point out, which I think is useful information, the plan does create a road layout. As far as the road goes, the 20-foot wide way, I'll call it a way, because I think it has been well established as a way, was first referenced from my research in 1948, when the land was conveyed to the Rod and Gun Club. The way was shown on a plan approved by the planning board in 1965, as a 20-foot wide right-of-way, and again on another plan approved by the planning board in 1987, as a 20-foot wide right-of-way. So, there is, there is a physical way there, and there is actually something that's been shown on previous plans as a 20-foot wide right-of-way, but this is the first that you see of an actual subdivision layout. But it's been well established that the way has been there for many, many years.
The width, the width of the gravel, packed with gravel drive right now is what, Mr. Bunker?
I can measure that, it's probably about 12 to 14 feet. Variable up, gets up to, or it puts more of their own, Lot 14 there, gets up to 40, 20 feet wide, 18 to 20 feet wide.
In the narrowest part?
At the narrowest, I got one, it's about 11 feet. Right above where it says Lot 15, up in that area there, it's, it gets down to 11, 11 feet or so.
Okay, so variable from 11 to 20 feet, huh? Is that what you said, sir?
11 to 20.
11 to 14?
No, it gets up to 20.
11 to 20 feet.
And, and-
All right, thank you. Okay, then I will entertain comments from the public. Please take the podium and identify yourself.
My name is Linda Moniz. I live at 207 Carriage Shop Road. This is my husband, Dan. I don't know if you want to look at any of these, and if you can pass them along.
Are you, are you Lot, Lot 11 on this plan?
Yeah. I didn't even get a chance to even look at the, yes, Danny, I'm looking. So you guys have just looked at these?
Sure.
And the, the 11 feet is right next to the house.
Okay. Start these down there.
I have lived in that house since 1962, and have shared, you know, occupancy, or whatever, you know, we've shared the road for all these years, and the Gun Club, the Skeet Club, and the Gun Club have always been very, very good neighbors. So, my, my only concern is- So my only concern is, you know, as the club has grown, the membership has as well, the traffic on the road, the big, you know, like the big bear trucks that go up and down the road. There's not enough room for two cars. So my big concern is I didn't realize that it was going to be named a road, Sportsman's Lane. And, you know, and if it is going to be named a road, is this going to be a two-lane highway where, because they already passed that boundary, you know, behind where we park our car, there's enough room for two trucks to get by there. There is not, by, you know, right by my back door, going down the hill towards Carrot Shop Road. And a lot of times, they will drive on the grass or, you know, up along an embankment. I do some, I do work for the town of Falmouth, but I do some per diem work with Bayada Nursing. Sometimes I'm out late at night, and after they have a meeting or, you know, a function up there, I have to wait at the end of the street for, you know, sometimes 10, 15, 20 cars before I can get to my house. So I don't know. Is this going to be, you know, I just want to know how much this is going to impact my, you know, where I live, my property driveway. And that's my biggest concern.
Your driveway to your property is off of the existing gravel area, not off of Carrot Shop Road, right?
No.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
And that house was built in 1900, so it hasn't moved, you know?
Okay.
It's right there.
All right, thank you.
You know, I don't know if, you know, if you want to take a look at any of the easement paperwork on the deeds or if that's even necessary right now. But I would just like more clarification of, you know, how wide this road is going to be or, and also, you know, future, for, you know, the impact of any more traffic. There's a lot of traffic up there. You know, when I was a kid, it was like, you know, maybe 30 or 40 members. Now there's over 350. If I'm not, I could be mistaken, but.
Okay.
It's just, you know, they did a nice job putting in the, you know, putting in the gravel there, but it hardly keeps the dust down, so.
All right. Is there anything else? Yes, sir?
On our deed, it says we have a deed at right-of-way of 20 feet and stuff in common. Does that mean that we automatically lose?
It's a secretary.
On the bottom there? Lose that, I mean, how does that?
Oh, no, I don't think you're going to lose anything in the right-of-way. But I'm going to give this to Mr. Curry, our staff member, and he can have it clarified for you. Can you? This is your actual deed, right? You'd probably want to give him a copy of that.
Okay, I'll do that.
You know where our office is?
Uh-huh.
Okay, absolutely. And we'll pass it on to our town council. Is there something else?
No, I just, you know, like to be able to coexist as, you know, we have been as neighbors. But it's, you know, I am concerned because you do see how narrow that, you know, that, you know, where I have access to our driveway.
Right. Just so you understand, tonight is a hearing.
Yeah.
And we will be taking this under advisement, and we will be discussing it amongst ourselves at a future meeting, and we'll try to let you know when that meeting is. Tonight.
Okay.
We'll try.
Okay.
I don't know whether we can specifically give her, Ms. Moniz, a date when we're going to bring this up again or not. Not just, not yet. The holidays has a cutback, but we are meeting, our agendas are posted, and you will definitely, you work in town hall? Then you'll know.
Well, I drive the bus.
Yeah, okay.
He, yeah, Danny's around all the time.
Fine, okay. Okay, thank you. Yeah, you have a question?
I just want to be clear now. Are you saying that you would prefer it stay the way it is, or are you advocating that that road be widened?
No, I would really prefer the way to stay it is because as you can see on the picture here, this is, from this here to there, that's only about eight feet.
Right.
You know? And as it is, the whole house shakes every time we have trucks and stuff go down there. It's really, you know, like I said, we have a heavy traffic, drive in there with a lot of cars. It's, you know, make it wire, we have double cars going down.
Okay, so you want to keep it the way it is?
Right.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear on that.
May we keep these pictures?
Oh, sure.
Okay, thank you. Other comments from the public? I'm sorry, are you finished? Did you have anything else you wanted to say?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, other comments from the public?
Gary Anderson, Treasure of the Falmouth Rod and Gun Club. Dan and Linda have been very good neighbors. They have been very accommodating. We try to inform them, and I believe that we do whenever we have an event. We generally have our meetings on Thursday night. There is a dinner meeting on the third Thursday of every month, and that's when there is a perhaps greater attendance and a little more traffic at the club. Dinners are from 7:00 until about 8:30 or 9:00 o'clock. People arrive a little bit early to socialize. We have three or four or five other events during the year. We have a game feed. We have a clam boil. April is generally when the game feed is, and the clam boil is in June. Those are probably the two biggest events. It is not the Rod and Gun Club's intent to increase the traffic in any way. As a matter of fact, we have capped our membership. We, on the business meetings that we have, the first Thursday of every month, we generally have attendance of 40 to 45 people. That's about what it is out of a membership of 300. We are very concerned, and we respect the Moniz's issues and concerns. We have tried to mitigate them, what the issues that there are. We did put the reclaim down because we were aware of the dust issue. We caution the members to be respectful. We do have, during the summertime, we put a traffic, what do you call those, road bumps or whatever, to slow the traffic down.
Speed bump?
The speed bump, yes. To minimize and to try to keep the dust down. But we do enjoy them as neighbors. We do invite them to our events, and they have attended, which we appreciate. And we do try to be as accommodating of them and their issues as we possibly can. It is not our intent to widen the road. All we want to do is reconfigure the lot so we can convey the property to the skeet club, and they can, rather than be a tenant, they can be an owner of their property.
Thank you. Other comments from the public? Hearing none, then I will close the hearing. Make sure I'm not missing something. Close the hearing and entertain a motion to take it under advisement.
Second?
Further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Obstained. Motion carries. Thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
And please stay tuned for when we will be discussing this at a future date. The next item on the agenda is discussion, wind energy system bylaw. At our last meeting, we agreed that we would reconsider the bylaw that we presented to town meeting. And so I asked Mr. Curry to ask each of you to bring three items tonight that you would consider, that you would like to reconsider on the turbine bylaw. I thought I would collate those, and then we can prioritize them and discuss them. We do have time constraints as far as coming up with a new bylaw or an amended bylaw so that we can get it on the warrant for the spring town meeting. Before I forget, and something that's related but not really, the wind turbine option group is meeting tomorrow night in the library at 6:30, if you are interested in attending that. Because, and the reason I brought that up is because it was obvious that the current situation with the wind turbines in town that are existing impacted the vote on our bylaw. So with that in mind, I would, I'll start down here at this end and go back and forth. And could you give me your three, the three issues that you'd be interested in reconsidering? Rich?
First is just a tweaking issue. There is apparently some concern as to noise.
Just give me the three issues, Rich. I'm going to discuss them later.
The size of the turbine, the turbines that don't have to be permitted, that don't have to be reviewed.
The 300-watt issue.
Yeah.
Okay, that's an exemption. That's an exemption.
Look at carefully.
Okay.
And the accessory use issue, which is the most important.
Accessory issue.
And other than that, I think the bylaw is pretty good shape.
So just two for you. Okay. Doug?
The original three that I had were getting rid of the exemption for the 300-watt turbines.
Okay.
I think that was a good point.
Yeah.
They could be noisy. The, I'd like to reexamine the 51% requirement and discuss the accessory use, whether or not we can define it differently. And.
Wait a minute now, those are two different things?
That's two. That's my second one. The first one is eliminating.
Accessory use, which is, which includes by definition the 51%.
Right.
Okay.
So if we get rid of the 51, then we got to think of something else.
I got you.
And the third one is I'd like to eliminate the requirement for the meteorological tower.
Met tower.
I actually have more, but I'll stop there for now.
I'm only going to take three for now. Pat?
Okay, well, I'm going to say, I've got the same three he does.
Same three?
So I'll add another one then.
Well, which one are you going to exclude then?
Oh, let's see.
I'm going to hold you at the three.
At K? Well, then I will throw out the met tower.
All right, so you want the exemption? You want the exemption?
Okay, let's say how to define accessory by percentage or other means. Should all turbines need a special permit and not allow the 300 watt by right?
So the exemption, yeah. And the other one?
And the complaint process needs to be better defined.
Okay. Jim?
I'm in agreement with accessory and the size of the turbine, but if we're going to do that, I want to revisit the, I want to have a better understanding. I thought we were deciding with some caution by having those limitations. Now that those are going to go away, I want to look harder at the sound issues, both the decibels and what other sound measurements that could be important. I don't, I thought we had established this restriction so we didn't have to worry about those fine tunings. Now, if these are going to go away, I think we need to fine-tune the sound side.
Okay. All right.
Accomplish the same goal.
Okay. More work. Bob?
My three would be the accessory use, the net metering, and the small wind systems, 300 watts or less.
Okay.
As well as just about everything everybody else has mentioned.
That's three, okay. And Paul?
The three issues I would consider are the accessory use. I don't think that's appropriate, and that's easy to change. The second one I have is the met tower.
Okay.
I don't think there's really necessary information that's available elsewhere. And the third one I think we should address is sound impact analysis. I think we have to spend a little more time on that because that was the crux of a lot of the issues that had come up in the public hearing and a lot of the oppositions. I think we have to spend a little more time on the sound issue.
All right. And mine will be the accessory use, the met tower, and the exemptions. So we have, the winner is accessory use. That's seven. That's unanimous. The next highest is the exemption of 300 watts. That's all but one of us. The next one is the met tower. And the next one is the sound issues. And the final one is the complaint process. So we have accessory use is number one. The exemptions is number two. The met tower is number three. The sound issues are number four. And the complaint process is number five. Now, that gives us five different issues, and there may be others that you may want So I think if you feel strongly about the fact that there's another issues that you want to address, I'll take them now. Rich? You were pretty happy?
As far as within the confines of that draft, no.
Okay.
Larger concerns, yes. I have some larger concerns, but that's not what we're talking about.
Okay. Doug?
Well, the concern that was brought up about whether or not we are conflicting with the state laws regarding to the Green Communities Act and the agricultural laws, I think we need to discuss that and explore where we really stand on that.
Grain and ag. Ag was, we pretty much agreed, said that that's a state exemption, and we can't deal with, we don't deal with that. But anyway, okay. Pat?
I don't have any other.
No other? Jim? Bob?
The wind energy systems prohibited, that the rate of capacity greater than 250 kilowatts in any zoning district. I think we should keep that at, I don't know how, what the people feel about that.
Okay. Paul?
Well, the recommendation of the warrant was to, the board of selectmen was not to pass this, and my understanding why they were saying it is they did not want to recoup any options coming out of wind turbine analysis. I think we have to discuss what their concerns are before we move them forward. Because if they're going to be imposed to this bylaw, regardless of how we adjust it, we're going to have some problems. So I think we have to ferret that out a little bit, and maybe the time will develop it. There is a winter meeting tomorrow, as you indicated, and they're supposed to come up with a report, I think by the end of the year, if not the first of the year.
Yeah, okay.
I think we have to address that issue because if the board of selectmen are not on board with the bylaw in any form, we're not going to go anywhere.
Okay.
I think we have to address that issue.
The way I understood their position was they didn't want to take anything off the table concerning the options.
Mr. Chairman, that's one of the larger issues that I thought were not strictly within the scope.
Right.
That's one of the surrounding issues. I thought we were talking.
That is true. That is, I have to agree with you. I think that they've expressed what their issues are, and they will be making some decisions before, is my understanding, before the spring town meeting. And they will also be receiving, I think, a final report from the options, the wind turbine option committee, either in December or early January. And so at that point, and that should still be before we have to submit our article to, for town meeting.
Albeit, the situation on Thomas Landers Road was the cause of our deliberations and the cause of our moratorium. Our task is not to address that problem. Our task, and what the selectmen want to do or don't want to do with that problem, our task is to devise a workable bylaw that will be in the best interest of all the citizens of Falmouth, including those like Mr. Raves, Mr., excuse me, I misspoke, Mr. Swig and Mr. Neto, who are interested in developing this kind of energy.
Okay.
So what the selectmen want to do, what they think shouldn't be part of our consideration.
All right, all right, that's an opinion. Okay, so now we've pretty much. Okay, so now we've, now we've pretty much, in far as I'm concerned, we prioritized these. We don't have to take them all into consideration tonight, but I'd like to remind you that in your folders, you have a copy of the bylaw that we submitted to town meeting. And if you want to refer to that, or, you know, you have a copy, original copy, or your copy that was in the warrant article, doesn't make any difference to me. But I would like for us to be very specific when we speak about, and we deliberate on these things, so you refer to the page and the paragraph so that we all go, get immediately to what you're talking about. It seemed to me that the accessory use, I had noted that it was in section A and D And so the A being the purpose, we're referred to accessory land uses. And also in paragraph D, which is in definitions, accessory use. And it may be listed in other places, but those are, those are what we're talking about right now. To accommodate energy, and just so that the public understands here, the purpose, under purpose, it talks about the purpose, the purpose of the bylaw is to accommodate, accommodate wind energy systems as accessory land uses, to supplement the power of the residents, et cetera. And under definitions, accessory use says, "For the purpose of this article shall mean no less than 51 percent of the electricity produced on a yearly basis by the wind energy system shall be utilized by the principal use, uses adjusted for occupancy and located on the same lot." So let's, let's talk about our number one priority, which we all think we ought to take another look at, and that's the definition and use and the statement about accessory use. Rich?
I think we should leave in here as stated purpose that it's an accessory use, and we just have to redefine what accessory use means.
Okay.
I think if we redefine accessory use, and I'm going to suggest we just simply say accessory use means that it is incidental to or supportive of another significant use on the property, period. It just, there has to be another use. We don't get into how much they can sell back, or, you know, there has to be another viable ongoing use, and this is incidental to it. So if somebody's in the machine shop business and they want to put one of these up, they can produce as much energy as they want, as long as that thing is incidental to their keeping in operation a machine shop business, which will be the primary use of the property.
So again, your wording was it should be an incidental use?
Incidental or supplemental to another primary use on the property, without getting into how much they can sell.
The primary use on the property, not another.
No, to a primary use, which shall be something else, which shall be something else.
Incidental or what, Rich?
Or supplemental.
Or supplemental?
To a primary use on the property, which shall be something other than the generation of energy.
To a primary use. Okay, Doug?
Should that be an existing primary use? I guess so.
No, if somebody is going to develop a piece of property, I'm going to build a building that's going to be my, you know, auto repair shop, and I want to have a wind turbine to supplement that, that's, that's, a primary business is going to be the auto repair shop. I'm listing myself in the trade as an auto repair shop.
Okay.
I like that definition. I'm fine with that. Think one more thing we should think about is, I don't know if I'm getting off the topic, but.
Excuse me, Doug, I just have one more point.
Sure.
And I say this because the other restraints we're putting on here, the size, the setbacks, and all those other things are going to be protective, you know, enough without having to worry about somebody's going to put up a wind farm there. I mean, it's not going to happen.
Okay.
Sorry.
So I'm fine with that definition. If others agree, that's good with me. We should, I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but there was another concern that a planned development of, say, six or eight houses would be built and wanted to share a turbine, and that may go on a piece of land in between all the houses. Should we devise a, an application for that? That's something that, I don't know if that's appropriate here, but it's just something I wanted to throw out there.
Why don't you hold that thought for now? And we'll see if there's a better place to plug it in.
Okay, otherwise I'm fine with that definition.
Okay. Pat?
I want to comment on that just a minute, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
Because what, I think the only place we could plug that in would be perhaps a planned residential development where they're on smaller lots to begin with, and then there's open space. Otherwise, anybody could put up a turbine on an empty lot, and that flies in the face of Rich's definition. So that's my comment on it.
Okay.
Okay, so maybe a TRD.
So it could be on a common open space, perhaps?
Common open space.
Okay, and that'd be shared land then, not primary land?
Correct. We don't have many of those around, but.
But part of a planned development.
Okay. I don't have a problem with Rich's definition because we have limited the size to 250 kilowatts. But when we're also then talking about in a residential area, we might be wanting to look at a smaller turbine, maybe like we have in our neighborhood, the 100 kilowatt, as appropriate for a residential neighborhood, and the 250 as appropriate for public use or industrial.
Okay, so where is the reference to the 250?
That's our limit.
I know that. Where is it? That's why I wanted, that's why I wanted.
C1.
What is it?
Todd's got it memorized.
I'm sorry. C1. C1. Okay, so possibly alter that, less for residential. Okay, Jim?
I'm, I'm fine with getting rid of, as long as it stays accessory use, I can, we can get rid of the 50 percent and the rest of that paragraph, but I definitely want to revisit both the size and the sound as we go forward.
Oh, yeah, okay. Sounds, sounds?
But those conditioned upon agreeing to that is because I'm anticipating we'll cover it in another way.
Okay. Bob?
I think Richard's definition is fine because we do have sound, setback, zoning, maximum size, and all that that can constrain what towers, what turbines go up in certain parcels anyway. So I think we can, as long as it is supplemental to the primary use of the property, I think that's a good definition.
Okay. Paul?
I was prepared to argue against.
Wait a minute, we need to get a mic down there between you two guys.
I was prepared to argue for getting rid of all reference accessory use in this fourth section of the document before I came here tonight, but I think Richard makes a very good point. The whole idea of 51 percent was intended that it was not a commercial establishment to generate wind energy. And I think as described as a supplemental use, I think addresses that without tying a particular number, which didn't make a lot of sense to me because it's telling someone how to use their property. So I think what Richard's proposing is a good idea to put in a supplemental use, and I would support that.
Okay. All right. My comments are, I like, I like the, I like Richard's definition also.
Can I have some?
Let me finish, please, Rich. But I'm just wondering if we need to go further. Is supplemental self-defined, or do we have to get into some kind of nitty-gritty thing there?
Have to define it.
Do you think we need to define in definitions what supplemental is?
I don't even think we have to. I think we can leave that up to the discretion of the permitting authority. If somebody comes in with a mobile ice cream cart, because I sell ice cream on this lot, but I'm going to put up a 250 watt turbine, we can say that's not supplemental use.
Okay.
Who are you trying to kid, right?
Yeah, who are you trying to kid?
All right, so now I have no, no definition not required, definition required. Who else has comments on that?
I think we'll.
Rich, please. I gave you a chance to speak. I'm asking for other people. Yes, Paul.
Jim, I agree with Richard. Leaving it there for our judgment is a good thing.
Okay.
I agree.
I agree.
All right. Paul, I think we might have you outvoted on this one. Bob?
No, he agrees. I agree with it too.
Okay.
Again, we don't want to tie our hands.
All right, right. So we're going to leave, we're going to leave the word supplemental as not, as understood rather than, and self-defined rather than putting in definitions.
Gives us.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Does that mean we delete the definition of accessory land use from the bylaw?
No, we're not going to, we're not going to, we're not going to delete that. It's going to be redefined according to what, what Rich said. It'll be, it will be, we will, Brian, Brian will be able to draft some language, including the word incidental or supplemental to a, to a primary use. And the 51 percent will go away, and we can, yes?
If you read the purpose, the first line says, "The purposes of the bylaw are to accommodate wind energy systems." The next phrase is "as accessory land uses."
Right.
If you delete that, "Accommodate wind energy systems to supplement the power used by residents and businesses," it's already there. You just have to delete the phrase "as accessory land use."
Oh, so now you're not talking about the definition, you're talking about the purpose?
I'm talking about the purpose.
Oh, well.
The purpose hasn't defined.
Not totally.
All right, so you're saying you want to drop "as accessory land uses" under purpose?
Yes.
Pat?
Okay, it's not totally defined because actually I think people are forgetting the final bit of what Rich proposed, "which shall be something other than the supply of energy." So he was proposing it should read incidental or supplemental to a primary use on the property, which shall be something other than the supply of energy.
And I would also add one word, a substantial primary use.
Okay.
So that gets, you know, that gives us.
That doesn't have to define.
Now, you're, now you're, now you're putting us under more scrutiny.
Well, no, it's up to our discretion. It's up to us to decide doing what is substantial there.
I think we're going to have to vote on whether we want substantial in there or not. We'll let Brian draft some language for us.
Yes.
And then we'll take another look at it, okay?
No, I think you need to define.
All right.
Just for great.
Now, Paul wanted to drop accessory land uses in purpose, under A in purpose, and I need other comments on that. Jim?
I'm totally against it. I think, I think that would be a big mistake. I like the way it is, and I want to, I'd like the accessory to stay. I'm willing to go with the changes that Richard's recommended, but I don't want to just open up the door.
Okay. Pat?
I think it needs to be in the purpose because it sets the tone.
I agree with that.
Okay. I'm trying to understand your position on this one, Paul. Why, why you need, why you feel we need to drop accessory land uses under purpose?
Well, the purpose is to supplement power used on site. That's what the purpose is.
No, Paul.
And you can define that any way you want later on, but the purpose is to supplement the power used by residents and businesses. That's what the purpose is.
I'm a lawyer. I don't see that.
Just a minute, Rich. Just a minute. I want to, I want to read this again. The purpose of this bylaw, the purposes of this bylaw are "to accommodate wind energy systems as accessory land uses to supplement the power used by residents and businesses, and to provide standards for the placement, design, construction, monitoring, da, 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 da." So you're, you, you wanted to read "to accommodate wind energy systems to supplement power" and drop it, and drop the word "accessory land uses." I still can't understand the reason why you want to do that.
Mr. Chair, let me explain why that's not a good idea. No disrespect, I think Bob Alment is a fine lawyer, which is why I'm sure, were we to do that, he would be the first one in here to say, "Well, the bylaw doesn't restrict this anywhere to accessory land uses. The definition of accessory land use is meaningless, and therefore, my client is proposing to build a four-unit wind generating plant on his industrial land." And there's nothing in this bylaw that says he can't do that without that statement of purpose that they're going to be accessory land uses only.
Yeah, I have to agree with that. You see what he's getting at, Paul? He's saying that if you don't, if you don't reference accessory use somewhere other than in definitions, the only, the only reason you have definitions is because whatever you're defining is referred to in some other part of the bylaw. Bob?
And we've also defined every, all the other elements in the purpose as well. And there, it's all part of this bylaw when we talk about the placement, design, construction, monitoring, modification. So to leave out accessory would be like leaving out one of those.
Okay.
Otherwise, it becomes a primary juice on its own.
All right.
Primary use.
It seems to me like the majority of the people want to leave it in there, and so I think that's what we should do. We'll ask, we'll ask Brian to give us a new definition of accessory land use, and if that's the, is there any other discussion on accessory land, the definition of accessory use, because that was our number one issue that we wanted to discuss? Does anybody else want to talk, say anything else about that? Do you want to just, we'll wait and take a look at it? Yes, Paul?
Well, this all depends on the definition.
Okay.
And my understanding is definition will not have a percentage. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So depending on how you word that, then there's no issue with the purpose. It's all in the definition.
Yeah, okay.
I understand what Paul's saying.
All right. All right, if that's the case, then I'm going to go to the next, the next priority that we had, and that was exemptions. On my, I had exemptions under E2, which is, which was the 300 watt, but there, that was something that everybody else, or most, let's see, six out of the seven of us were concerned with that. So under that, I'm going to start at this end of the table, and with discussions on the exemption of 300 watt or less, not, not needing a, not having to have a special permit. Paul? If you want to pass, you can pass, and then I'll come back to you.
Well, I think we have to be consistent. And C, we say the rate of capacity greater than 250. Here we're talking by rate of capacity of 300 or less are exempt. So do we have any consistency there?
Well, one is a maximum, one is a minimum. The wind energy system rated at 300 watts or less is exempt from the provisions of this article. So you're talking about the little guys here, and that was, that was an issue where people felt as though you could put a little, a little wind turbine right on your, right on the, on your property line and still create issues, you know, flicker and, and, you know, you still got the noise requirements, but anyway. Anything, Bob, you want to, any comments on that?
Yeah, I think we just strike it.
Just omit it?
Yeah, just omit it.
Okay.
I'm in agreement, I'm in agreement. No exemptions.
Well.
If we get rid of it, then all wind energy systems need to get a special permit.
Okay, so there won't be any?
There won't be any exemptions.
You would admit the entire paragraph?
Yeah.
It says no wind energy system as defined shall be constructed without receiving a special permit.
Okay.
Eliminate two is what I'm in agreement with.
No energy as defined.
Leave one, delete two.
So you're just going to say, admit number E2?
Delete two, E2.
Deleting two.
Okay. Pat?
Absolutely, delete two.
Doug?
Same thing, delete two.
Rich?
I want to revisit that because I had some question as to what the adverse effects were, thinking that maybe we should go into more of that for the hearing to really determine whether there is an acceptable level where we could have no, we could have an exemption. But I'm not going to argue very strongly on that because, again, if we're talking about a 300 watt. But I, I'm not going to argue very strongly on that because again, if we're talking about a 300 watt system, they're going to find it much easier to meet the setback requirement than, than, than some other systems. So, uh, I think maybe once we get going, we could adopt some more streamlined procedures for review on, on those smaller systems. But, uh, that, for a later date.
Yeah, Doug?
We can waive any part of our review as we go along if we find it's, uh, not, yeah, any problem.
Pat?
Uh, we also heard a number of people say that the smaller ones are noisier and therefore would be far more annoying than the larger ones. And yet we were giving them a pass. So that's why I think.
That's why I want to have more hearings, to get to the bottom of that. He said so, you know, it, it.
We don't know, but if it turns out over time, we can.
Techno, you know, technology will change. More comments down here. Bob?
The reason why you were giving them a pass is because we felt the, uh, current zoning laws, nuisance laws and things like that would cover those situations.
Right, right.
But I think, uh, we could eliminate any of those hassles if we just strike it, uh, from, from the bylaw, like we've said.
Okay. Paul?
I agree.
Jim?
All set.
I'm, I'm just wondering, um, if you go online and you can buy a small wind turbine, um, you know, for, I don't know, $1,500 or something like that, and, uh, just stick it on the top of your garage or house or something. And I, you know, and I'm not, I'm just thinking, um, I'm just wondering, would, would this, would this, uh, planning board be inundated with, uh, hearings and that kind of thing? You know, that just because that there, these things could be, um, very readily, readily available and of a small capacity, but somebody wants to charge their, um, their automobile because they have an electric car, you know, something like that. I mean, I just, I'm just, that's just a thought. Yes, Doug?
But, you know, with the precautionary principle, you know, we should at least see a couple and get to know them. We haven't even seen anything on them. We don't know really yet. Once we know a little bit more, we can let them slide through a little easier if we feel like it's safe.
Okay. Yes, yes. Rich?
Well, I assume we were talking about freestanding, uh, installations to start with. I mean, something that's going to be put on top of an existing garage or existing structure isn't going to be that substantial, something that you can buy catalog.
I, I don't know.
Now, it might, even though it's not that substantial, uh, it might be noisy as hell. I don't know, but, but still.
We'll find out.
We'll find out.
Okay. All right. Pat?
Well, I would also have to say that I don't have any reason to expect that we will be inundated in the future because we certainly, the ZBA currently has not been inundated with anything.
Yeah.
Of that nature.
I know. I just see more and more electric cars coming down the road. That's all. That's, that's not a pun either. Go ahead.
If we delete E two, which is the 300 watt system, I think we have to look at the small energy wind system definition. Rated capacity between .3 and 60 kilowatts. Maybe we should just modify that to say less than 60 kilowatts.
Yeah.
That, that's, that's very true. And, uh, that's small wind energy system. So we would strike, uh, wind energy system with rated capacity.
Less than.
Less than.
60.
60 kilowatts. Thank you. That's a good catch.
And if, uh, let's see, I've served something.
Should we say less than or equal to? Because sixty might be.
Okay, equal to or less than. Okay. Equal to. Or less than. Okay.
Ralph?
Yes?
If we're tidying up, uh, some of these other things too, if we change accessory in the definitions, uh, B three.
B three.
West may only be permitted when accessory to a principal land use that has been operational for at least two years. Do we eliminate that item there or just the, uh?
We can, we can take that up now.
The operational for two years.
We can take that up now. That's, that's a good catch.
Only permitted when accessory to a principal land use.
Yes. All right. And then do you want to strike then in, in, in B three?
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, that has been operational for at least two years?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, because that was all related to percentages and whatnot.
Right, right.
We don't need it anymore.
So wind energy may only be permitted when accessory to a principal land use.
Period.
Period. Any further discussion on that? That's a good catch. Um, any further comments or about exemptions, which was our second priority? Hearing none. The next item is the met tower requirement. Let's see, met tower requirement I had under D for definitions. Um, that's on the bottom of page two of the one we received anyway. A temporary tower equipped with devices and is direction, uh, okay, expected to generate. So I, I'm not, I'm not, I think that's a good definition of meteorological tower. The point is how and, how we want it, um, implemented. And that is, uh, let's see here. I can find it. If anybody comes up with it.
Engineering details, okay.
Four D.
D, four D.
Where is it?
Page four.
Page four?
F four.
Four D.
Oh, for engineering details. Four D. Okay, four D. All right. So now, um, that, that it seemed to me like there was a public comment saying that there were other ways to define and to determine what, what the, um, what the potential for creating wind energy is in a certain location. And, and it was through models. And then the other side of that is that, that we have experienced and, and read about and heard that a lot of the models are not accurate in, in other, in other areas that have to do with wind turbines, not necessarily met towers. So that in mind, um, I'll start again down, uh, well, no, I'll start with Pat.
Okay. I think we can leave met tower data 12 months and just add or equivalent available data. Because we were, we heard that there's a lot of data out there that could be used without constructing a met tower.
Or, or.
Or equivalent available data.
Equivalent available data. Okay. Doug?
I guess that's okay. I thought we were going to strike the met tower, but it's still a good suggestion.
For some of the big, for some of the big ones, I mean, the bigger ones, they may want.
Alternative.
Right. Rich? Oh, I'm sorry.
While we're here, right above it is C, actual power consumption over two years.
Where, where is it? Be specific, please?
Uh, four C, right above the met tower.
Four C, actual power consumption over two years.
Delete.
For principal uses on the lot.
We should delete that line.
You want that deleted?
Yes, please.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Now, Rich?
I, I kind of, I could see either way, just deleting it entirely or going along with Pat's.
Good.
The, the, the principal objection I see to that is the prohibitive cost of, of doing that. Uh, and if there is data out there that can just simply be, you know, taken down, uh, from published sources and submitted, and that's acceptable to, that, that eliminates the concern about the, uh, the met tower. If there's situations where the use of public side, public, public, publicized data would not suffice, then we can fall back on the met tower.
Okay. Jim?
I'm in agreement.
Bob?
It, it goes to the definitions of, uh, the met tower. And I, I, I think some people just wanted that completely stricken, but I, I believe that, uh, we should have it for large wind energy systems, that it shouldn't be deleted completely. That I think it gives us a, uh, an extra layer of protection by requiring for larger sized turbines.
So then should we modify Pat's thing and say, "Or equivalent data we're modeling for small wind energy?"
I, I think the, the met tower for small systems, for resident, residential systems, uh, the cost would be prohibitive.
Yeah.
And I think we can use other methods to do that, although I'm not really convinced of, uh, computer modeling, given, uh, the spaghetti charts for hurricanes. Uh, I mean, that's what a lot of these computer models do.
Yeah.
Uh, you, you pick what you want out of them, essentially.
Okay, wait, wait a minute, Doug. I'm sorry. Uh, Paul?
I think the issue is really, do you require someone to set up a met tower and take a year's worth of data before proposing a project? And we're trying to eliminate that. So I think if you change that four D to say representative meteorological data for the site, you get what you're trying to get without making a requirement that's particularly onerous to set up a met tower for a year.
Yeah.
No one's going to do a project.
The 12, the 12 months is, is definitely has to be considered here and as whether or not we want to change that.
If it's representative meteorological data, you can define it any way you want.
Yeah. You may, um, it was, it was pointed out that, uh, you know, a certain years, a, a met tower will give you a certain data for one year and might give you, uh, different data for the next year. So for 12 months, it's, um, it's, it's somewhat, um, nebulous. I, I'm not just sure what, I, I, I would think that the 12 month thing needs to be considered here. Um, Paul wants to strike it. Um, Bob, what do you think?
Do we want to strike the whole meteorological tower requirement completely?
Well, if what Ralph is saying.
Wait a minute, Rich, please.
I mean, is, is that what?
I'm, I'm, I'm asking. Is that what you're suggesting?
I'm not, I'm not suggesting it. I'm just asking the question, is that the road that we want to go down? Because we need to decide that first before we decide on some of these other aspects of the bylaw.
Uh, I agree. Jim?
I would like to have the option to require it for a large wind gen, wind energy system.
How about the 12 months? Do you want, do you want 12 months?
I think it might just be 24.
Do you want 12 months of data?
Well, I, my understanding is there, it's better to have 24. So, I mean.
Well, you could have 36. But the point is, my point is this, if you're, if you're going to, if you're, you have new construction and you want to, you want to power your new construction with wind, with wind, with wind energy, you're going to delay the construction of that, of that proposal for 12 months while you get this data? Or are you going to ask them to put up a tower and, 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 and give you some data in two or three months? Or data, you know, I, I.
I think the difference between winter, summer, spring and fall is drastic.
Yeah, it is.
And I, I think too, I, I, I think it's foolish to not have at least 12 months.
Okay. Pat?
That's exactly right. And that's why we were looking at the 12 months because of the discrepancies between the seasonalities.
Yeah.
But that's also why or putting in or equivalent available data would cover that too.
They, yeah. Let's say for instance, just this as an example, you, you want to put up a wind turbine and, uh, something, you know, a block, a half a block away or a block away, somebody has already done it, has the analysis and there's no difference in the terrain or anything else, you might be able to take that. Doug?
What's the harm really of letting them build at their own risk? It's they that will benefit from the met tower, not us.
I understand because it's going to convince them whether or not they want to put up a turbine.
Right. So that's onerous to require it. If they want to feel like they want to take the risk, I mean, that's free, that's what being a free country is.
Well, but they, they, well, but or equivalent, or equivalent available data, they might be able to, you know, bypass the 12 month thing and say, uh, I've, I've got a model here that says that if I plug in Massachusetts Cape Cod, um, South Shore, blah, 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 however they do it, it comes up with the data that they want.
Right.
Rich?
Well, there's two timeframes that, that we've been talking about. I think I'm going to keep them clear. One is the 12 month change, seasonal change. Then there is, you named it, the period of years. And we, we, meteorologists talk about 100 year storms.
Yes, I know.
Then there can be 50 year storms. And then there can be 10 year storms. So we don't want to get into a situation like in the old Soviet Union, we had to wait six years to buy a car. I mean, you know, this is, I think we might.
I think.
We might simply say, you know, if, if what we're concerned about is the seasonal change, if somebody can come up with data, you know, that will tell us what the seasonal change is and require that they do that over a 10 year span or over a five year span. Well, pick, pick a number. More than 12 months. So that will address the issue, uh, much better than a 12 month wind, you know, meteor, meteorological tower. That's only going to give us one year. If you have available data and you can tell us what it is over five years without the tower, that, that's much better for everybody because it, it accounts not simply for the seasonal fluctuations, but for the fluctuations that occur, you know, in different years.
Okay. So it, Pat's language, or equivalent available data, does you think that covers what you just said?
Yes. And it lead up to the option. Now, I would say not for 12 months or equivalent available data over five years.
Well, that might not be available.
No, that may not be available. You know, why, why don't we leave that, why don't we leave the 12 months in and just say equivalent, equivalent available data down here. Paul?
I think the issue is we do not, we are not requiring a proponent to build a met tower to collect the data. There is a data available.
There's an option.
And anyone who's proposing a wind turbine is going to do due diligence, see if there's power there or not. Otherwise, he wouldn't even be proposing it. So they've done their due diligence. They've come up with some information. Information is available. And I think we should, uh, request representative meteorological data for the specific site and not tie it down to a three month, 12 month or something because there are variations over the year too.
Yeah. And, and that's, that's what we should specify is that the data cover the different seasons and it covers, uh, different scenarios, uh, of high wind days, uh, uh, when or when there's no trees, the different terrain. So I, I think we could condition any, uh, data that we collect from computer models as well.
So the language is good. We'll just be, we'll just take it case by case basis?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay. Jim?
I'm set with the language.
You're easy tonight, man. Yes.
Oh, you're.
Doug?
I thought you said you were upset.
No, I'm all set.
Oh, you're all set.
I would be fine with it just saying met tower data and skip to 12 months. Met tower data or equivalent data or modeling. Because as you pointed out, Ralph, if it's, uh, a business venture, are we going to really make them wait a year?
No, but the, the, the 12, the 12 months applies to the met data tower only and not, and not to the equivalent of, of available data.
Right. But there was some talk from some people who'd like to still keep the requirement on large wind jet, wind systems, the, the met tower data. And I don't think that we should.
Well, I, I mentioned that in the, in the beginning. If we were looking at, at met towers, we were going to keep that.
And if we keep, if we concern ourselves with seasonal variations and long-term planning of it, it's not as if we're worried about the sound study part of it. And the sound study is when you want to worry about the seasonal variations and so forth. But as we just said, if the people are going to be investing in this, they're going to do their own due diligence. So I don't think it's on us to tell them they got to wait 12 months. If they think they can get it in three months and then use the modeling to, uh, project the rest of the information, I mean, that's, I mean, I think that should be up to the applicant to decide for themselves.
Okay. So I'm going to ask everybody to, yes, Bob?
I think if we give them an even or, uh, they'll make the decision. We, we should have it in there because a thought that just crossed my mind is if we strike, uh, putting up a meteorological tower on a piece of property, then does that preclude them from doing it if they want to? And is that going to require additional permit to put up a tower or something?
I'm not saying to strike it. He's just saying strike 12 months.
Right.
That's all he's saying. That's all he's saying.
Yeah. Oh, I know. But I'm saying that if you still, uh, given the option of putting up a tower, it should be the tower for 12 months or the appropriate.
Okay. So you're in favor of leaving the 12 months in there?
Yeah, because it wouldn't be, why bother putting up a tower?
Okay.
Uh, because what I'm, what I'm looking at is you've given an either or. And what, what are most people going to choose? They're going to choose computer modeling or something that's going to get the job done faster. But if somebody is really going to invest in something, they might want to invest in meteorological tower so that they, they do get, uh.
But they might, kind of.
Yeah.
They might look at. They might look at the map and say, "Okay, this model says that in, uh, May to June, I should expect this. So let's put up a tower and check out how our site holds up compared to the model." But they could do that without even mentioning to us, I suppose.
Yeah.
I'll tell you what, I think we've, I think we've discussed this enough. I think the way we're, we're looking at it now, the way, uh, Pat, uh, proposed was it to read met tower data twelve months or equivalent available data. I'm gonna ask for you to vote on whether or not you wanna leave the twelve months in that statement, okay? Leave it in or leave it out. So those in favor of leaving it in, raise your hand, please. One, two, three, four. Those opposed, three. It stays. Okay.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
Fossil fuel industry has such, such a good job in messing up the environment that any meteorological data that we have four or five years ago ain't necessarily gonna be the same. In fact, I can guarantee you it will be different five years hence.
Well, that.
And, and anything that gives you.
So you wanna have the met towers, so what are you asking?
Isn't gonna necessarily a whole truth for the life of any wind turbine.
He goes around and gets himself out.
It just ain't gonna happen. I mean, you just know.
All right, Rich.
Another source, another source of, of carbon emission is from the melting of the polar ice itself. So it's, it's the carbon that has caused the polar ice to start melting. Now it's gonna be increasing geometrically, because all that stuff that's been buried under that ice for, for millennia, for eons, is now coming up, so.
Richard, wind energy hasn't done nothing to reduce that.
What?
Wind energy has done nothing to reduce that.
Because, because it's, it's interesting.
Denmark, Denmark has over six thousand wind turbines. Fifty percent of their electricity is generated by coal. Massachusetts, fifty-two, is by natural gas. Denmark has not closed one power plant in thirty years.
Well, that's.
Because, but their, their.
That's the problem.
Their, their demand is going up.
That's the problem. We.
It only, it still only produces twenty percent of their electricity.
And we continue to fight trillion-dollar oil wars instead of putting trillions of dollars into, uh, developing better technology for solar.
That's not what we're discussing tonight. We are discussing this bylaw. I don't wanna get beyond the bylaw, please. Gentlemen, please, 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 Rich, please.
See, it's futile to talk about meteorological data.
Please, Rich, please. Okay, we've discussed met towers, and we're gonna move on to the next one, and then I'm gonna ask you whether or not you wanna continue anymore, or you wanna leave the rest of the issues to the next meeting. So next, the next, um, issue was on sound. Jim, you brought that up, so you wanna give us the references and give us your, uh, suggestions?
Well, what I was concerned about is, we were talking about eight kilowatts at the property line? I mean, eight decibels.
Jim, I need you to refer to the specific.
No, I'm trying, I'm actually trying to find it.
Okay.
I don't know this.
Page six.
What?
Page six at the top.
Page six at the top.
Yeah.
Sound setback, is that what you're referring to?
H two B?
Yeah.
Yes, I guess, I would like to hear, I would like to learn more about this before I just carve it up and change it. What I'm concerned about is that if we're, um, eliminating the accessory, the fifty-one percent, these things could be of any size, so I'd really wanna know more about the, uh, the, uh, decibels at the property line. I, I thought, I was comfortable with it before, because I thought we erred on the side of not making a mistake, and now I'm not so sure, so I'd like to learn more about that.
Okay, Pat, am I correct that the state, uh, recommendation was, uh, ten?
No, and yes.
I'm not, I'm not right. I thought we lowered it to eight.
Well, it's a dual answer.
Okay, would you explain that, then?
Yes, the state says you cannot have more than ten A-weighted decibels over the ambient background sound. However, in the C E C, um, document, they recommend that the modeling, which is how it's generally done, be targeted at eight decibels, because the models are incorrect. Now, Matt McNamara from our Z B A said that they put theirs at six because of a greater discrepancy than the eight. So he would recommend that we look at less than an eight decibel.
Is that a policy, if there's only more to refuse?
Well, that's what they, no, it's not a policy. It's not in the bylaw. That's what they struggled with when they permitted the Webb turbine, and also, I believe, it's the Scanlon turbine, too.
So it is, so it is their policy?
It's their policy, but can you say it's a policy? I don't think they have it written down, it's just what they have used.
And with their recommendation, do we?
Okay.
Yes.
So they're using six.
Letter to us, he recommended six.
Yep, okay.
We're recommending eight here based upon the state recommendation. And in their modeling, they call it a, a K factor, I believe.
No, the state said ten.
No, 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 no. I said there are two, there are two numbers. When you are modeling, if the state recommends eight to do your model against.
Oh, the modeling is eight.
Models are generally not accurate, and they find that if you model it to ten, it will always exceed ten. So that's why they say.
So we covered ourselves.
Well, maybe we did and maybe we didn't, and I, we don't have the data on that. We have the state C E C report saying eight, we have the Z B A on their two permitted turbines saying six. And we've had testimony here from people who are affected and who've done some studying on this, saying that they recommended, I think, five or six.
Okay, let's start the discussion down there. Rich?
Well, the obvious solution to that, and I would say that is not to discuss this particular question any further tonight, since it's not gonna lead to any decision, cannot lead to a responsible decision, but to task the planners, the planning staff, uh, and others in the community who are interested in commenting with getting us more information, so that we can get to a better level of, uh, to decide, to decide on, better information to decide on, because we, as Pat has simply said right now, we don't have it.
Okay, Jim wants more information. Rich says we need more information. Um, how do the rest of you feel?
Yeah, I think we need more information, too.
Okay, now.
If we're, if this is gonna be kind of the nuts and bolts of some of the decisions we make, uh, I think we need as much information as possible.
Okay, so where are we gonna get this information? I mean, where is the planning staff gonna get this information? I mean, we've, we've.
Yeah.
Well, we've looked at a lot, we've had a whole library of information available to us, and I don't recall that there would be anything in there that would change this. Yes, Doug?
I would suggest we all go back and review a lot of our public comment. A lot of that useful information is in there, although it's subjective. And also, I would suggest that we all make the homework assignment of our own to read the updated models zoning amendment that the state has put out. We probably all read it, but let's read it again and look at how they recommend dealing with the sound and the standards that are put forth, because that's the part where we maybe could take a little more from the state guidelines.
Okay.
Yeah.
Paul, any comments?
Yeah, I, I think it's a good idea to review the, uh, the state-laid by law, two thousand and eleven. I think the, uh, letter from the zoning board of appeals had a number of issues, including this one, I think we should look at. You really asked for other issues.
Yeah, okay.
I think there's some other issues in there that we have to come up to. But I think we've made an effort to try to lower that for the perceived error in modeling down to eight. Whether you go down to six or not, I don't know if it makes any sense, but what we need to do is look at it more carefully and find out whether it does make sense to do that, because if you have no increase in sound, you're not gonna get anything there. So you gotta have something.
Yeah.
And what's appropriate, I think we have to carefully look at that, because that's what the main crux of the problem is, as I understand it with the president's, the sound, the ultrasound.
Okay. Jim?
Well, I mean, this all comes about everyone saying, "Well, what we were doing is restricting the advancement of technology." Hey, if somebody can come up with a wind turbine that only does, uh, three decibels, let's bring it on.
Yeah.
So I, I.
Yeah, uh, Pat?
Okay, I think the question needs to be narrowed for Brian's research and for anybody who wishes to give us information on this, is that we are dealing with a state law that allows ten decibels over ambient background noise. The question in its narrowed form is, how accurate are the models that are standardly used? What is the accuracy? And what, therefore, is the target number that we have to be looking at here? Is it eight? Is it six? And Brian, I know, I was just clarifying it so that people could understand. But I think, I mean, what you'd be looking for, but I think there's another question that was brought up in the comments. And that is that we are only looking at, in this case, the, uh, pure tone and the A-weighted decibels. The A-weighted decibels are that which the human ear can hear. If we start going down into B and C, we are starting to get into health issues, which is not our purview. But that is what also people were wanting us to look at in this bylaw, when they brought up sound issues. So that's where some of the difficulty is gonna lie, and we will continue to get comments on that.
Jim?
Just a quick question. Pat, you said state law. Didn't you mean state guidelines?
Guidelines, did I say state law?
You said state law.
I'm so sorry.
There is no state law.
Oh, well, no, there is.
But you were referring to the model guidelines, right?
No, I was referring to the ten.
Is that a, is that a state law?
That is. It is not?
It is a guide.
Ooh, I'm so sorry. I always thought it was a law.
I don't think so. I wanna be clear on that.
I thought the, I thought the state.
Wait, Brian has a comment.
There's a model out there that you're reading from the State Department of Energy Resources. It's a zoning bylaw. There are some D E P regulatory that were struck there that, you know, the state model.
Model, okay, that's, the part was important.
Okay. All right, so I guess we're gonna do a little homework on our own before we meet again. We'll need to have this discussion, I guess, on the wind turbine system bylaw on every one of our agendas until we, until we.
Right, so you made a great start tonight, so we'll go into some sections for you. And it's just, they start knocking it off one by one.
Okay, yes, Doug?
I know we haven't, we're not gonna be able to finish the sound issues, and, uh, but should we at least discuss the number five, the complaint process?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask whether or not you want to continue tonight and, and go into, uh, the next one is, uh, the complaint, um, the next, the next, uh, one, uh, prioritized was the complaint. It was the, um.
That's right, yeah.
It, it, it was, was you, Pat, that brought that up?
Yeah.
And so, wait a minute, I just wanna ask whether or not you wanna continue tonight, or do you wanna stop there? And do you wanna start next week with, uh, the sound and complaint, and then the, the other two, the, the other ones that are left? Do you wanna, do you wanna continue? Those you, those who wanna continue to do at least one more tonight, raise your hand? Okay, looks like Doug, they, they will ask you to leave this building at, at eleven o'clock. Okay, so, all right, so, um, that's, that's, that's it. So I think, I, I must, I must admit that, uh, I think, I think you all did a great job tonight on this. I agree with Brian. Got a good start on it. So the next item on the agenda, are there any releases, Brian? Uh, committee reports, any committee reports? Okay, I, I, from the, as the planning board representative to the community preservation committee, I would just like to, uh, tell you that if you, if you weren't at the, uh, the third night of the town meeting, that the, um, that the, that the, that there was a question about PAL, the Police Athletic Activities League. I think they've changed their name to Activities League. That there was an issue about whether or not they were going to accept, uh, the community preservation committee's recommendation to, uh, purchase some, uh, playground equipment. And they, they, they thought that that was gonna be in, that there was gonna be a deed restriction associated with that, and that was not the case. And so that was explained on the, on the, at the third night, and so town meeting agreed to, uh, take the recommendation and provide, uh, money for the police athletic league's, uh, playground out in back of their facility. And should they cease to, uh, operate, the, uh, equipment will then revert to the town. And the town can place it in, in a, in a town playground. That's my committee, my committee report. New business? Anything you wanna see on the agenda in the future? I have one. Um, I've spoken with, uh, Pat and with, uh, Jim and with, uh, Brian. I would like us, I would like you to prove the fact that we would like to meet quarterly. The three of, the three, the chairman, the vice chairman, and the secretary meet quarterly with our staff just to discuss, um, upcoming events and, uh, calendars and agendas and so forth. So, uh, I would like you to think about that and see whether or not you agree that, whether or not that's a good, uh, idea or not. Correspondence, I didn't see any, Brian? There's no correspondence, okay? And then with that being the last item, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.